Committee on Finance and Law will come to order. Calling the roll, Mr. Enos.
Present.
Dr. DeMello is abroad and Mr. Fiori is present. There are no student activity accounts to be reviewed this evening. We have a use of facilities report. Motion to be in order to receive and placed on file.
So moved.
Chair seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed so voted. Then we have two bills payable warrants. First, one for fiscal year 22 in the amount of $555.22.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds. Any discussion? Hearing all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed so voted. Then warrant for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $1,127,025.64.
Motion to approve FY '23 warrant.
Chair seconds. Any discussion? Hearing all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed so voted. This is Moynihan reports that there are no updates with regard to facilities, so motion to be.
Motion to adjourn.
Chair seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, we're out of here.
Call the meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare And the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. I'd also like to add, ask for a moment of silence from the committee for Barbara DiCosta Rosconi, who was a longtime paralegal, not paralegal, I'm sorry, para-professional in the Taunton Public Schools. She was involved at Taunton High School at the Alert Program. She leaves two daughters and some grandchildren, and she was an integral part of our school system for many, many years. So our thoughts and our prayers go out to her family. She passed away on December 2 of this year. So a moment of silence, please, for Mrs. Rosconi. Thank you. Mr. Fiori, could you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiori is present. Dr. DeMello and Mr. Bier are absent. Mr. George?
Present.
Mr. Laura?
Present.
Acting Chair Fagan.
Okay, we have an order here, business to go through. We have approval of the minutes, but we do not have the minutes present, so these will be asked for approval at the next school committee meeting. And there is also no student advisory committee report tonight. I believe our students are busy. They could not make it this evening. And I know there's nobody here, I believe there's no public input, but Mr. DeMello asked that I read this little thing about what public input is, so I will do that for him. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines will be provided upon signup, and individuals will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who sign the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. So seeing that there's nobody there, we just read it, and people hope they can remember this stuff when they want to come down here for public input. And the next thing is the New England School Development Council, NESDEC, facility study update. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Cabral, and this is going to be by Zoom, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. So in your packet, you have a very small or condensed version of the New England School Development Council demographic study, and also a facility analysis, which also has options. So the comprehensive report, which we are going to go through different sections of the report tonight, the comprehensive report in total is about 184 pages. So you do not have the 184-page document in your packet this evening, but you will be provided with a copy of that document after this meeting. We'll probably get it sometime Thursday or Friday. So the NESDEC report, again, the last time we completed such an analysis of this depth was around 2009, 2010, so we've been long overdue for this analysis of, again, our student enrollment projections, as well as analysis of our facilities. And we also, as NESDEC, based on the information they received regarding our facilities and based on their analysis of our enrollment, to provide us with different options. Should the committee choose, again, should the committee choose, they're going to provide us with five options that we can explore at a later date. My recommendation would be during a committee of the whole, or we may choose to do nothing and not act at this point. But again, we have this information. A lot of this information will be utilized in our strategic plan, it'll be utilized in our capital improvement plan, and it'll also be utilized in our long-range plan. So the person who had the Herculean task of putting together this report with the support of the Assistant Superintendent Brendan Moynihan, Director of Transportation and Student Services, and as well as Mark Freitas, Director of Facilities, and all our principals, assistant principals, it was a very thorough and comprehensive report. The gentleman who had the pleasure of compiling all this data is Christopher Malone, who is joining us via Zoom. So without further ado, I will turn things over to Mr. Malone, and he will walk you through the different pages that he's going to be reviewing. You may not have some of these pages in your packet, and I just want to reiterate to the board and to the community, we are receiving this information this evening, and at a later time, we'll come together, and if the committee chooses, we can start reviewing and vetting the different options, seeking input from our principals, from our parents, from our constituents, to see if we want, as a school system, to pursue any of these options, looking at the overall health of our school system over a five, 10, 15-year term. So with that being said, Chris, if there's anything I forgot to mention that you would like to point out before starting your presentation, the floor is yours, and thank you for joining us via Zoom.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, thank you very much, and honorable committee members, thank you for having me here this evening. This is a very comprehensive report. The report you have on the screen right now is over 180 pages. The good news is, I will not be going through all 180 pages. I'll just be highlighting some areas that I hope will stimulate the committee and the community to look at this report a little bit more in depth. And a big thank you to Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Moynihan for all their support. We asked for a great deal of data from the district. We also conducted a two-day in-person visit. Assistant Superintendent Moynihan walked with me to every school in the district, and we walked through every piece of school building, and certainly that takes a lot of time out of their day, and is very much appreciated for doing that. Once again, my name is Chris Malone, and I'm from the New England School Development Council. Who also joined me on the team was Karen Leduke, who did a lot of the demography enrollment work, Nancy Gustafson, who did some virtual tours of schools, and of course, our Executive Director Art Betancourt. So just the overview of kind of how we look at the best education use facilities. We also want to include, which I think you have in a small report, the demography and updated 10-year enrollment projection. We try to make sure we marry these two bits of information when looking at facilities and enrollment, to hopefully inform the district long-term on decisions they may make or may not want to make. But we hope this document and this full report will serve the district well over the next few years. And certainly, we're very appreciative of the fact that the district took this step, particularly at a time when things aren't in crisis, or there aren't necessarily extensive needs for major moves. This is the time to do reports like this, where you have substantial information, so that you can plan accordingly moving forward. And the two main goals is provide a better understanding of long-term future in each building, thereby suggesting options for considerations in a manner that's consistent with the district's long-term plan, and to potentially inform budget plan. When we get to the options, again, as Superintendent Cabral mentioned, these are really 10,000-foot views of options. They are discussion starters. They are not comprehensive, vetted options. A lot of that work would have to be done at the district level to really layer on what is most important for Taunton Public Schools. But we hope we have given you is some good, strong information and data to move forward We've broken the report up, and again, it's a lengthy report into three different parts. The district's student enrollment projections, which I think you have a major portion in your packet, the facilities utilization study, which I'll show some examples of what that looked like in some of the individual schools, and then we'll talk through some of those 10,000-foot options for consideration. The scope of the demography is outlined in your report that you have. We use multiple points of data to kind of come to this consensus. Lot of the data provided by the school district, the U.S. Census, the Warren Group, HUD, DESE, information from the town planner, from the building department, local realtors. And an element that we always are careful with is the U.S. Census Bureau has incrementally released a 2020 census. So the 2020 census is not in its full capacity as of yet. However, we did pull some available information from that 2020 census. And we hope that these projections really help the school planning forward out at least 10 years. Our reliability in the first two to five years is very strong, and we hope to have some considerations identified for the district to think about as we move on to that 10-year span. I'm just going to increase this a little bit, so you can see. Just as an overview, in the New England states, projections for student population from K through 12 for all six New England states are projected to decline over the next 10 years. Massachusetts, as you can see, over the next 10 years is projected to decline 4.5%, which is far less of a decline than most of the other New England states. However, that is a key element to think about when we look at varying school populations throughout the region, and many of this is also very consistent throughout the entire If we look at Taunton's overall city population since 1990, from 1990 to 2000, there was certainly an increase, but it's been a fairly steady population from 2000 to 2020. That recent piece around 2020 is a little bit of a blip up on the city's population. We'll look in that report to discern how the city's population compares to K through 12 enrollment in the public schools, and what other factors may influence, even though if a city's population might be very steady or even going up a little bit, what are those factors that impact the student population in the given district? Again, one of those factors is the median age of the population. You have the United States, Massachusetts, Bristol County, and Taunton. And as you can see, from 2000 to 2020, all of those elements have gone up. The median age is growing. In Taunton, it is a fraction of a percentage point lower than what you might see as the state of the whole, and a little bit lower than Bristol County overall. But again, from 2000 to 2020, in that 20-year span, the median age of the population is definitely increasing. For Taunton, what we were able to do is pull out some aspects of the overall population from 2020 and identify how much of that population is school-aged, five to 19 years. And that total is 18.2% of the population. You have further grade level spans or age spans down below that, and then you also have other age spans that aren't necessarily school-aged. But what it really shows is what's the percentage of the total population that is school-aged. Another aspect we look at pretty heavily is the birth rate. And as you can see, the number of births in Taunton since 2006 has declined with some upswing tics in different years, but the birth rate overall has decreased, and this is very consistent with what you'd see across Massachusetts, New England, and to certain extents throughout the country. So when we think of populations going up, but birth rates sliding down a little bit, that also impacts the number of students that would be in the K-12 range in the public In addition to this, we eye contacted several realtors in Taunton and talked through some of the data that we have. We have building permits, some historical data on housing and so forth. What we wanted to get was a real-time view of what the home sales were looking like in Taunton. And again, this is anecdotal, but they are feeling currently home sales have gone down from last year, as much as 19%. Days on the market have increased for home sales, in some cases doubled. Inventory has increased. Common selling price, that's a wide range of $425,000 to $600,000. Again, not all that data was derived from single-family homes. There may have been duplexes and others in there, so that might account for that wide range. Buyers have been equally distributed between first-time buyers and more mature buyers downsizing. A significant migration from Boston to Taunton, or the Boston area to Taunton, and with a key indicator, the improved rail system to Boston being attractive. And also, an impact has been the rise in interest rates for buyers. It has caused some homeowners to sell below asking price, less waiving of home inspection, and a reduction in bidding situations. That last bullet was something at this time last year was almost the exact opposite. Many of those things were going on in home sales across the state. We also worked with the building department to look at currently approved construction projects. We really utilized the criteria that this project was in progress. The city has many other projects that may be in permitting phases or other elements, but they haven't technically broken ground on the project. We'll, you know, identify those, and certainly, the school department should consider those in future enrollments. But these were the ones that were definitely underway, the three that are listed. The city does not currently calculate how many bedrooms are in each unit at this phase of the construction process. That is a key element for us in looking at the yield of students that could potentially happen from new housing coming to a city. We assumed in these three projects that they were three-bedroom, which would be kind of that maximum range. If they were one-bedroom or two-bedroom, they have very little impact on the yield of students to the district. Once they get to three bedrooms or more, they have a larger impact on the yield of students. So we made the assumption that these would be three-bedrooms. We don't know that for sure. Below that, you see the projected student yield in regards to that over the next three to five years. So we're looking at those projects that have actually started, and looking at the potential impact of them on K to 12 students in Taunton over the next three to five years. And as you can see through that, in grades kindergarten through fourth grade, we would see a range of 17 to 23 students in grades five to seven, four to six students in grades eight to 12, two to three students. Again, it's those units is not that large of a number. What that could potentially be with other projects that may come online in the next year or two could have some significant influence on that. So we also look at student migration in and out of schools, including district reported moving to and from private schools and school choice enrollments. Review the stability of grades one through eight. I'm getting a little feedback at this time, Steve, I'm not sure. Can everyone hear me okay? Thumbs up?
No.
Great. We look at the stability of the grades one through eight, migration students, births, as I talked about, and housing. So those are all elements that we look at within that concept. This is what we've pulled in a graphic form of the historical enrollment to the school district, total number of students enrolled in the school district. You can see at 2012, 2013, it was 7,404, and 2022, '23, 7,583. So you do see somewhat of a crest in the middle, but that overall is a very stable enrollment to a school district Taunton size. And it is certainly reflective of what we've seen in other schools, reflective of the city population as well, but it is certainly, we would consider that a very stable element. Projected enrollment, as we move along from 2022, '23 beyond to 2032 and '33, we continue to see that stability moving on. We do see and project a slight decrease. Any individual years, both leading up historically and projecting forward, for Taunton Public Schools, really from year to year is less than a one-point, a one percentage point change in any year-to-year historically, and we've kind of continued on to that, except for one particular year moving forward. This is very consistent from what we've seen throughout the state of Massachusetts and New England, a slight but steady downturn. And, you know, it's something to consider long-term for the district, what type of impact those numbers may have. Again, it's less than 1% change typically from year to year, so it's more that is a stabilization factor than it is an overall decrease over those 10 years. This graphic, and I think this one is in your packet as well, this compares the historical piece and the projected piece, and really kind of dishes out the grade spans individually of historically what the numbers have been, and then projected out, the dark green being grades K through four, the bluish green being grades five through seven, and the lighter green being grades eight to 12. So again, overall, over the lifespan of that term, it is a very stable environment with stable numbers, and annually, very rare situations where an increase or decrease would be over 1%. Currently, what we're projecting is Taunton's K-12 enrollment over the next three years will decrease by a total of 224 students. Again, that is less than 1% annually. The robust real estate market indicates that Taunton is a viable community for residents. That's something definitely the school district wants to keep an eye on. New residential construction, specific projects current under construction will have a small impact on enrollments, and that's what we talked about when I looked at that slide. After talking with Mr. Scanlon, the commuter rail access of Route 24 and 114 seems to be drawing some new residents to Taunton, which could have an impact on enrollment. So that's also a piece we want to keep an eye on. And just as an additional note, the MBTA has implemented a new multifamily housing regulation that will allow 3,700 units of housing around the commuter rail station. Any new stations coming in, something to consider in the future. That may not impact Taunton solely. That would likely impact other surrounding communities as well as Taunton if that comes into effect. So just when we layer on that projection and the student yield, those yellow columns would be the student yield to additional to the projection, adding on projected housing or other pieces that may affect. You can see the difference from year to year is somewhat minimal, but overall, the additional housing that will be coming in in the short range in the next three to five years will have an impact, but again, far less than 1% annual. With that enrollment information, what we moved on to is a school facilities review. And what we wanted to make sure we did was looked at a systematic way to look at each of the buildings in Taunton, and make sure we had some consistent measurement pieces that the district could use long-term. We looked at physical aspects, programmatic, operational, something to think about in the aspect of a urban school district with a large number of students as Taunton, is programmatically, operationally, there's likely changes made at the school level all the time. So some of these are captured at a time and place, certainly when I visited or when I spoke with the principal. So some of these pieces become somewhat fluid, others are more permanent. We'll look at the space utilization, and what's key for us is we look at the current space utilization, how many classrooms, and you'll hear this term interchangeable classrooms, how many classrooms are used in each building? And what we'll try to project out is if those classrooms were maximized on class size, and you have that class size element, which I believe is reflective of the most recent union agreement, and to see what the maximum capacity or operational capacity of those schools could be. That's not to say that in any way we're recommending that those class sizes should be maxed out at each classroom, but what it gives is a parameter for the school to plan and to rule in and rule out different aspects. In some instances, we made exceptions for science labs or other specialized instruction. We also look for each school for potential shortfall or surplus, if that, again, operationally, how they're utilizing the school right now, if that was ever. We looked at all 12 schools, and you'll find a piece in regards to each school. Again, it's a consistent piece of information. What I'm going to do is go through a couple of the schools, just so you get a sense of what that information looks like. But we have identified each one of the schools and gone through the same exercise. The first school I'm going, and these were somewhat randomly chosen, let me see if I can get to it, is the East Taunton Elementary School. the East Taunton Elementary School. And I apologize if some of the pictures of the schools are not flattering. I took them myself. But again, thank you to all the school personnel who were very gracious when I visited. But as we look at the schools individually, one of the first elements we'll look at is what grades are being housed, when the school was built, have there been any additions or renovations? What's the square footage? This number, particularly in elementary and middle school classrooms, interchangeable classrooms, how many classrooms are they using for instruction right now with students? And what is the enrollment as of October one, which is their state reporting deadline for that? So we looked at all schools consistently for that information. We looked at these instructional spaces. For instance, at East Taunton, there's twenty-six interchangeable classrooms. In addition, there's one small and two full-sized self-contained special education classrooms, one art room with two part-time art educators. We look at the core facilities, cafeteria, gymnasium, which is a combination at the, at the East Taunton. How many lunch periods they have? What's the seating capacity in those lunchrooms? How physical education is conducted? Library, media center? What kind of storage do these areas have? How many students could they possibly support? We looked at administrative spaces, how they're being utilized. Is the space adequate? Everything from principals, assistant principals, nurses, conference rooms, teacher lunchrooms. And we also looked at support staff. And I think this is a key element really for the committee and the community to look at because the amount of supports that Taunton Public Schools is offering students is extensive. There are some great things going on for students in these buildings. They do require a lot of space to operate, and they do that. So for instance, at East Taunton, you can see the beginning of the list with adjustment counselors, psychologists, Title One literacy. This list goes on. We have a music educator, and that music is actually being conducted in the library at East Taunton. Guidance counselors, again, EL instruction, OT, PT, BCBA, RBT. All of these elements to help service students require spaces to service. And the principals are doing absolute yeoman work, finding ways and spaces for these services to happen in the schools. We also looked at the instructional technology in each school. What is the access? What is the computer usage? Predominantly across the board, there's either a one-to-one specific or at least one computer available for each student in all schools. How are the plans being utilized, computerized? ADA handicap accessibility across the schools? Site information, parking, pickup, drop-off, field space, proximity to traffic, storage in certain areas. Again, these are consistent elements. We looked at all twelve schools throughout so that people can compare schools as you go through the report. Major systems and management, major systems and maintenance. We looked at all aspects of what was reported to us and the functionality of it. We did not do an engineering or an architectural study. We did look at areas that were reported as needs improvement. But as you can go through, you'll be able to compare schools and look at what are their major systems and maintenance status at this time. And then finally, to sum up each school, we'll look at the current facility space utilization. That is taking that interchangeable classroom number, number of classrooms, and multiplying it times the maximum number of students that could possibly be in that classroom. So for instance, at East Taunton, they do have one pre-K classroom with a maximum capacity of twenty students. They have twenty-five classrooms from kindergarten through grade four. We multiplied that times twenty-seven, the maximum class size, to get six hundred and seventy-five. And four additional self-contained special education classrooms with the maximum capacity of twelve students for a total of forty-eight. And that gives us the total number of seven hundred and twenty-six students. Again, that's maximizing the current class space that is available. The next school I just want to take a quick look at is the Friedman Middle School. Little bit different, built in two thousand and one. Thirty-seven interchangeable classrooms has a current enrollment of seven hundred and thirty-one students. Thirty-two interchangeable classrooms, five specific science labs. We spaced that out right now. Those will, you know, when we do the total number, we'll bring the five back into the thirty-two interchangeable classrooms. Art room, STEM, band room, music room, chorus room, and so forth. So we really tried to identify all the spaces of a classroom being used for outside counselors, a classroom being used for the building, and this is the city of Taunton building apart. Core facilities, cafeteria, gymnasium, auditorium, library, all with capacity, numbers of students they could possibly support. Administrative space, similar to the other schools. Support staff, again, similar to the other schools. And we've also identified whether that space is adequate or not adequate. Technology, ADA accessibility, parking, drop-off, pickup, field space, proximity, storage. Major systems. Again, with many of these newer schools, you're going to see that the major systems are in satisfactory operating condition at this time. And again, a finalized piece on this. At, we took the five science labs and added it to the thirty-two interchangeable classrooms to get a total of thirty-seven, times twenty-seven students per school maximum per classroom, for a total of nine hundred and ninety-nine. Six self-contained special education classrooms at a maximum of twelve students per classroom for seventy-two, which would give us a total of one thousand and seventy-one students. We did not identify any potential shortfalls or surplus in the building. But again, those are maximum numbers. And really, that's in place for feasibility around planning and looking at options. The final school I want to look at is Taunton High School. Built in nineteen seventy-five, renovation with Parker Middle School, interchangeable classrooms, sixty-seven point five. Significant number of other classrooms that aren't considered interchangeable, that are specialized, we'll identify those. October one enrollment, two thousand eight hundred and twenty-one. We noted that the instructional spaces from our look at the scheduling and other aspects are being utilized six out of six periods. So many times we go into high schools or even middle schools, and sometimes the classroom is empty a period or two out of the day. This is not the case at the, at the high school. The enrollment does exceed the current facility space utilization. Sixty-seven point five interchangeable classrooms, twenty science classrooms, and then a litany of other specialized classrooms. Maybe whether those are related to Chapter Seventy-four programs, pathways programs, specialized instruction programs. Those are listed separately outside the number of those interchangeable classrooms since they're so specialized. Again, moves on with the different types of classrooms that are there. Outside of those classrooms, we also have some eight special education academic support rooms, two English language learner, one transition room, a junior ROTC classroom, large, two large presentation spaces, and one district presentation space. Core facilities, maximum capacities that go along with those core facilities. Administrative space. If you noticed in here, there are some district offices located within the high school as well, as you may see throughout multiple buildings in the district. Support staff. Technology and ADA accessibility. Site information, challenges, storage. Major systems and maintenance. The age of the building certainly is showing through in some elements. And the final piece on the high schools, try to really articulate what all those spaces are used for, how they're utilized. What we also include at the bottom of this graph, you'll see emboldened where it says high school current facility utilization factor, is we multiply that by zero point eight on that maximum number. The reason we do that is typically in high schools, you have fluctuation between class sizes, whether it might be an AP classroom, whether it might be a particular shop program that has far less students. So we know that utilization in a high school varies quite differently from a middle school or an elementary school, that those class sizes can be adjusted depending on the content or the usage of the classroom. So when we added up all the classrooms with the maximum capacity of students, we came to three thousand four hundred and eighty-three. But then we multiplied it down that programming utilization factor, which brought it down to two thousand four hundred and seventy-two. Again, it's a little bit of a tough piece to specifically navigate the current utilization of those classrooms as compared to an elementary classroom where you know there's twenty-three students in the third grade classroom. There's twenty-three students in that classroom all day long. Some of these classrooms get used very differently and have different numbers, and we try to account for that. Some potential shortfalls. You know, again, a lot of this goes down through some of the specialized programs that are offered at the high school. Office space for assistant principal, conference room space, teacher work room space. We also, whenever we defined a deficiency, we tried to give a hint of what would need to be to correct that. The district, we need five to seven classrooms to address any shortfall. That's not to say that the district should immediately go in and free up five to seven classrooms. It just gives a real space idea compared to where the shortfalls are, what level of space would be needed to correct some of those shortfalls. And again, enrollment exceeds current facility space utilization. So looking at the options, and Superintendent Cabral outlined this, I think, very well. We have some very general stems of options that we've put forward that are really designed for the district to really think about. To enact any of these options would certainly involve significant work at the district level and significant fine tuning to look at different aspects. What we've tried to do is throw out some general options from the information we've garnered here from our experience with other districts that maybe looked at. And some of them might be ruled out right away for multiple reasons. But we want to make sure we had somewhat of a comprehensive list of options that the district could consider moving forward. Again, this document should not be considered an end product, but rather as a beginning point to the future planning. We hope this generates some discussions, certainly at the district level, about potential options that could be developed, more specific options that could be developed outside of these stems. Option one, we considered reconfiguring elementary schools to specific grade span schools. For instance, grade spans of pre-K through grade one and grade spans from grade two to grade four. That would change the grade level alignment. The preschool would remain at, at leady. Grades pre-K, pre-K, K, and one would be at three of the elementary schools. Grades two, three, and four would be at the other three of the elementary schools. Again, broad brush thinking, thinking about realigning in grade spans. That option could be looked at in multiple different ways and configured in multiple different ways. But it's designed to get some thinking going around grade spans. Advantages, affords more consistent class sizes, facilitates collaboration, can ease crowding in some of the elementary schools, affords more pair and family interaction with grade level students, promotes consistent inequity of opportunities and resources, and has potential to increase support for special education programs. Again, any of those advantage would have to be realized in fine tuning any of those options and really developing it further into an actual proposal. Challenges, eliminates K-four neighborhood schools. Consideration by constituents to determine geographical locations of the reconfigured grades pre-K through one and two through four. Any of these changes, you know, that are major along that level is certainly going to have a reaction from the community, from constituents, and that always has to be thought through. It increases current student transitions. It looks at the challenges of realigning staff, costs associated. Any of these options may have cost association with moving of staff and programs, restructure transportation routes, increase travel time for students and families. Almost any of these changes are going to have those challenges that will need to be further vetted out if any of these options get further identified. Option two, consider realignment of elementary school boundaries to more evenly distribute elementary school students across the elementary schools. This would be, basically be redrawing the areas of which those particular elementary schools support. Pre-K through K through four at the current elementary schools, but redrawing those school boundaries about what neighborhoods those students come from. And some of the same attributes that would go on with option one would be, would be seen in option two as well. Affords more consistent class sizes, eases some of the crowding, more equity distribution of students, and promotes consistent inequity. Challenges, consideration by constituents to determine the realignment of elementary school boundaries. Some families would need to switch elementary schools. Challenge of realigning staff, infrastructure, transportation, and increased travel time potential. Option three, consider opening an eighth grade academy at Parker Middle School. Move all grades five, six, and seven to the Martin Middle School and the Friedman Middle School. This would have the preschool and the K through four remaining at their current buildings. Grades five and seven would be moved from three middle schools down to two, the Martin and the Friedman. Grade eight would go to the Parker Middle School, and the high school would go from grade eight through twelve to grades nine through twelve. Advantages, eases crowding in Taunton High School, supports an academy model at Parker Middle School, provides focused transition period for eighth grade students entering high school, enhanced opportunities to meet the needs of eighth grade students, maintain opportunity for eighth grade students to access high schools, high school courses, and affords opportunities for Taunton High School students to access increased electives, alternative pathways at Taunton High School. Challenges, consideration by the constituents to determine the geographic location and reconfiguration of grades five and seven. Space considerations when moving three existing schools of grades five through seven into two schools of grades five to seven. Costs and challenges of moving staff, restructure transportation, and increase time travel. Option four, consider removing all district level offices, administration, and support services out of the five schools in which they are currently housed and relocating them to a different site. Grade level alignment could support any of the grade level alignments in the options previously identified. Advantages, creates office and classroom space throughout the district to support individual school operations and increase capacity. If a suitable location is found, brings all central office staff and operations together at one location, resulting in improved efficiency and productivity. Challenges would be pretty clear. Determining a suitable, cost-effective location to house all central offices and operations. So the challenges certainly are very obvious on that. Option five, consider reconfiguring elementary schools to include grade five. Make Friedman Middle School and Martin Middle School grades. Make Friedman Middle School and Martin Middle School grades six and seven only, and establish Parker Middle School as grade eight academy. This would move the fifth grade into the current elementary schools. It would move the sixth and seventh grade into two middle schools, the Martin and the Friedman, and establish the grade eight academy at the Parker Middle School, and have the high school move from grades eight through 12 to nine through 12. Some of the same advantages as in some of the other options. Some of the challenges, very clear, consideration by constituents to determine geographic location of reconfigured grades K through five and six and seven, brings up entirely additional grade level to the elementary schools, some of which are smaller and currently challenged for space right now. All the costs associated with moving programming, transportation, and impacting pickup and drop off, increased congestion at those times, and the need for travel for families. So these are the kind of broad five options we looked at. Obviously, they're very general, they come from a very much a 10,000-foot level. What also is important here is if you wanted to consider option six, which is to do absolutely nothing. Again, I think, we think it's a good exercise to go through this type of work. What we hope we've provided is kind of a broad range of elements. Any of these options could be mixed and matched together or rethought. Any of these options, if they were going to come to fruition, would require significant planning, significant effort at the district level to really look at the specific elements that will either make this or work or be a barrier to it being successful, and really considering all those advantages and disadvantages thoroughly within any of those planning aspects. Once again, I really want to thank Superintendent Cabral, Assistant Superintendent Moynihan for their assistance in this. I think it's a true feather in the cap of the school district to at least look at this type planning, look at bringing together elements in a report like this that hopefully can be used long-term for the school district. It may not result in major changes happening, but what we hope it does is really promote strong thorough thinking for the school district moving forward, and we hope that it supports the district's mission in supporting all the students of Taunton, and we hope it's effective and helpful to you moving forward. With that, I'll open up to any questions members of the committee may have.
Anybody have any questions? Can't see everybody. Mr. Polowski?
You might just go back to option one. Sorry, my apologies. Could you please go to option one?
Anybody else?
So if there are no questions, oh.
Well, one thing I don't see discussed, I think is a major factor in what we've been doing is that a major reason for putting the eighth grade into the high school was that high school students are reimbursed from the state at a higher rate than the middle school students, and it was thought it would be more income to the district. This analysis doesn't really take into account what that impact would be, and I think that's something we need to consider. The change was made when I wasn't on the committee, I'm really not thrilled about the idea of putting the eighth grade into the high school, but on the other hand, now that it's been there, the impact of taking it away, I think, would be significant in our budget, and that's something that really needs to be analyzed if we're going to look at any of that potential realignment.
That's something that we can definitely look at, but I do believe when we do our budget presentation and we provide you with an analysis or a snapshot of the chapter seventy summary, the eighth graders are still factored in as middle school students, but we can double check that figure, Mr. Fiore, and get that answer, that question answered for you at the next meeting, for sure, to make sure that we're not seeing a deficit or taking a hit with regards to chapter seventy.
I'd like to make a motion to refer the matter to the committee as a whole for further discussion, review, and consider the options.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Nate, you seconded that, right?
Yeah.
So on that note, I just want to thank you, Mr. Malone, and thank NESDEC for your outstanding efforts and contribution, what I feel will be a report that we will utilize for many years to come, and it's nice to know that we can put the previous report to bed and now have a current report that is up to date and a true reflection of the Taunton Public Schools with a clear projection on what our enrollment and what our facilities will look like for the next 10 years. So thank you again for your help and support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All set with that? Next is the superintendent's report, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. So in your packet, I provided you with three quick updates regarding some of the happenings in the Taunton Public Schools, as well as some work that I've been involved in outside of the Taunton Public Schools, but that will definitely benefit our great school system. So the first item, I'm very proud again of the work taking place in the Special Education Department under the direction of Amy Moynihan, who is the Director of Special Education Services here in the City of Taunton. So as a result of DESI's annual evaluation that identifies specific needs for technical assistance or intervention in special education, we are thrilled to share that the Taunton Public Schools has received a positive determination report. So there are several areas considered when developing a school systems determination report, and I provided those for you in my report. And in order to meet the state's requirement, you have to score a minimum of 75%, and I am proud to report that Taunton Public Schools, with regards to special education, reached that threshold of 75%, and therefore, we are meeting the requirements set forth by the state. So as evident by the most recent report from our CPAC group when they presented earlier in the fall, I believe the Special Education Department is on the right path in making sure that our students' needs are being met, as well as working with our parents to make sure that the needs of their child, their children are also being met. The next item in the report is something that I would like to share with the committee regarding some work that I was involved with at a state level and also at a national level. So on Friday, December 2nd, 2022, I was one of four panelists at the 2022 New England Association of School and Colleges NEASC Annual Conference. In attendance, we also had the Chief Executive Officer of the National Federation of All High School Associations, we had the Executive Director of the Connecticut Association of Schools, and we also had the Massachusetts Executive Director of Interscholastic Sports. We participated in the panel, and we discussed many topics, but the topics of discussion centered on developing a standard-based approach to assessing the quality of athletic programs. And this was a suggestion that I made selfishly, knowing that we have a very robust athletic program, and the people or the person that we have leading that program isn't going to be with us forever. Eventually, that person is going to retire or may possibly move on. So selfishly, I was thinking that if and when our athletic director does move on, he has a lot of institutional knowledge that we're going to lose. So if there was a list of standards, a list of criteria that the incoming athletic director could model or could utilize, not just here in Taunton, but in other school systems, that would help to establish a minimum benchmark that all school systems should be achieving or intending to achieve in order to have a high-quality athletic program, which I believe we have here in the Taunton Public Schools. So in addition to talking about a standard-based approach to athletic, to evaluating athletic programs, we also discussed some other essential topics that are really relevant in Massachusetts, New England, and nationally today. Topics include sportsmanship, hazing, which was another incident of hazing in the news not too long ago, racist behavior, coaching shortages, lack of officials in school athletics' true purpose, which is, you know, athletics comes from an education, with an educational purpose. I've always believed that being a, that our kids who participate in high school sports are student athletes, and I've also believed that playing a high school sport is a privilege, not a right. And I think in some cases, not saying this needs to be done here in Taunton, but in some cases, I think we need to get back to the roots of athletics being an outlet, not being seen as a privilege so that students can go Division One or go pro. So we cannot understand the large amount of human capital that has been lost or invested in dealing with these matters, not to mention the loss of employment by district and school leaders when a crisis impacts the school system based on a misbehavior by a coach or a student athlete. So those are all topics that we spent discussing. We also took a deep dive into areas impacting high school athletics. The panel shared how school systems are responding to these challenges. A portion of the panel discussion highlighted the work currently underway in Connecticut, which is a leader in developing a standard-based approach to measuring high school athletic programs. The panel ended with a question and answer session and discussed next steps in continuing this work. So as a superintendent of Taunton Public Schools, it was an honor to serve on this esteemed panel and to highlight the many successes on the playing field and the long-range, and our long-range facilities plan. It was also an honor to share the work of Athletic Director Mark Otto Vianelli and his staff to address the many concerns negatively impacting high school athletics and the work to eliminate barriers preventing students from participating in high school athletic programs. The next step would be to grow and support this work, and I was asked to attend the Addressing Hate in School Athletics Conference, which will be held tomorrow at the Boston Garden. The conference's purpose is to provide additional programming and information on best practices to build positive environments in athletics and prevent and report and address hate incidents. The conference will include presentations, panel discussions, and workshops for school administrators, athletic directors, coaches, referees, and other high school leaders. So again, I'll continue to keep you posted on that work and how that impacts the Taunton Public Schools. And last but not least, I was just sharing this with Mr. Jakes earlier this evening, it's hard to believe that the holiday concert season is upon us. So last Thursday, December 1st, Taunton High School kicked off the holiday concert season. Our very own high school symphonic band, which I believe consists of about 72 or nearly 72 musicians, performed along with the American Band of Rhode Island located in Providence, and it was an outstanding concert, about an hour and a half. Our kids sounded great, the American Band sounded amazing. I think it's a great indicator or a great barometer for our kids who wish to perform or play in a band outside of high school, and I'd be remiss, or I would be remiss if I didn't mention that our very own Director of Performing Arts, Corey Beltrum, actually performed with the Providence Band as well as his mother are in the band. So it was a great evening, great way to kick off the holiday concert season, and I look forward to many more concerts, which I believe we have one tomorrow night, and then next week, I believe the middle schools kick off their concert season. If you don't mind, if you skip to the back of your packet, you'll find an updated version of our school improvement plan. So our school improvement plan, when it was developed, we mentioned, that is, it is a, sorry, our strategic plan. Our strategic plan is a living, breathing document that are we going to continue to revise and tweak to make sure it fits the needs of the Taunton Public Schools. So what you have in front of you, which was last updated in November, is the updated school, Taunton Public School Strategic Plan. So the mission statement, the vision statement, as well as our theory of action, those were all reevaluated and the language was changed. We also modified our strategic objectives, so we used more concise language, and we also made sure that we provided the action steps that will follow each strategic statement. So for strategic objective one, curriculum, instruction, assessment, and planning, we have provided you with four steps or four goals that we will target over the next five years in order to continue to achieve at a high level. The last piece of our work with regard to the strategic plan, and we're probably about one or two meetings away from finishing this work, is to finalize the strategic outcomes that'll lead us for the next five years. So for strategic objective one, we have identified or developed three strategic objectives. For strategic objective two, we have two, and for strategic objective three, we have four strategic objectives, and for strategic objective four, we have one strategic objective. So again, typically, we would have anywhere between seven to 10 strategic objectives that will be implemented or completed over a three to five year span. We're about one or two meetings away. Once that work is completed, I will provide you with a finalized draft of the Taunton Public School Strategic Plan. And with that, that concludes my report. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions regarding any of the items in the report.
I'll set to move on. Okay, Administrative Business Staffing Report, it's in the, it's in the closure in our packet.
Received and placed on file.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. REIT's Collaborative Annual Report, does that for you, Mr.? You're going to report on?
Typically received and placed on file.
Want to do that also?
Subcommittee.
Okay.
Received and placed on file.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Law, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance and Law Committee met this evening with myself and Mr. Enos. We received a use of facilities report and approved bill payable warrants, first for fiscal year '22 in the amount of $555.22, and fiscal '23 in the amount of $1,127,025.64. And then the committee adjourned.
I have, I'd like to be voted present on voucher number 2302652 on page 15, in the amount of $97.88. Thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That's the end of it, right, Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Okay. Unit B Administrator Subcommittee, once again, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was ill at the time of the last meeting with Unit Bs. I'd ask if Mr. George could report it out for me.
Negotiation is ongoing in regards to those matters.
It's your motion to accept the report?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Elementary Subcommittee, Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Elementary Subcommittee had two presentations this evening, one from the Galligan Elementary School and the other from the principal of the Bennett Elementary School, where they talked about extensive plan that they are in discussion and in fact, taken into effect of the challenges which students have experienced the last two or three years, taking into account their learning process, where they're modifying their styles to incorporate all of the challenges, making them up to date, and taking into account that the priority of the schools would incorporate the, the school climate, the engagement, the safety, and the environment of the school, and they continuously are collaborating with the personnel on a common basis to ensure that all students receive the optimum educational opportunity possible, and that's the report.
Received and placed on file. A motion to accept, I guess.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Committee of the whole, as Mr. DeMello, Dr. DeMello is not here, we attended, several of us attended the Committee of the Whole meeting, which was the night at the high school where we honor people in the community, our recognition night, and it was nice to see principals and other teachers just bringing out students that they thought were just outstanding in the way they treated their classmates, helped out their classmates, and participated in school. Those, some of those young kids were just wonderful. They were just so upbeat and positive. And also to honor the members of the staff who have just contributed so much and have helped many of the students. So it was a really very, a very interesting night, a very, everybody was happy about what was going on, and it's so nice to be together with people after these past couple of years with COVID that we could finally get together and have a small celebration of all the outstanding work that's happening in the Totten Public Schools. So I want to thank the members that could come. I know sometimes the, other things are happening at the same time, but we had a good, good attendance and great participation for the audience, so that's the report.
Received and placed on file.
Second.
I think that's, accept the report, right? Does it matter?
It wasn't, if you wanted.
It doesn't matter, either way. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next. New business, I believe this is you, Mr. Cabral. Totten High School Winter Coaches Meeting, seeing close. Do you want to elaborate on that a little?
Yeah, just quickly, I just want to make sure that the committee is aware, as well as those in, in, at home who are watching, that every season prior to the start of the athletic season at the high school, our athletic director meets with the coaches, and I provided you with a copy of the agenda of the different topics that Mr. Otto Vianelli reviews with the student athletes and our coaches to make sure that everybody has a clear understanding of what the expectations are before the start of each season. And I just wanted to note, in lieu of the recent hazing incident that's been reported in the media, hazing is a topic that Mr. Otto Vianelli does cover with our coaches. So again, as I stated earlier, not to belabor the point, I believe our students, our students, our student athletes, notice how we reference student first and not athlete, and again, it is a privilege, not a right, to play a high school sport, and I am very proud of the high standards that our athletic director holds our coaches to and the high standards that our coaches hold our student athletes to. So again, that's just more for informational purposes. And the next item, Mrs. Fagan, I'll just go real quick. That was just point of information regarding what I mentioned in my superintendent's report. We got into NIASC, National Conference of Standard-Based Approach for Assessing the Quality of Athletic Programs. Just a point of information.
There's this document here. Mr. Cabral? This one, right? Okay. Unfinished business and action item updates. Update on teaching vacancies. Mr. Cabral?
I am sad to report that we made some good progress and we were in single digits, but we are still sitting at 11 teaching vacancies due to recent resignations, and I'll continue to keep the committee updated.
Next one, strategic plan update. Did you saw, you just did that, okay. Review process for the superintendent's evaluation 2021 through 2022. In your packet, we received a document from Dr. DeMello, and as you know, under the Massachusetts General Law, the superintendent of schools is the only public school employee required to be evaluated in open session, and Dr., Mr. Cabral provided us with copies of the evaluation tool, which was updated in July 2019. There were six standards under the previous tool, and now they're, we're down to four. Those four standards are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. We're not asking anybody to complete this at this time. We're asking that you look this document over, and at the December 21st, 2022 meeting, you should come prepared to share your thoughts. So the process that we have is if you go into this packet a little bit, we have the standards here, so if you, if you look at the first standard here, the superintendent's performance rating for standard is, and this is instructional leadership, and there's several things in there. It's about the curriculum ensures that all instructional staff design is effective and rigorous, standard-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. Then there's things about instruction practices, assessment practices. All this is part of it, so you have a choice from, oh my goodness, Mr. Cabral, I forgot what this.
You won acceptable.
You won acceptable. It was a good, yeah. Needs improvement.
Improvement.
Yeah, and then excellence. So you have four different things to pick from that you can mark off in here, so, you know, you can look over the evaluation. Mr. Cabral presented to us with something last week. You did your own self-evaluation, and we have that tool. And you also said, could you please tell them what you were going to provide for them?
So if you, if you haven't received it this evening, Wendy will provide it to you. So it should be on the table. I think Wendy provided you with a copy of last year's evaluation, so you can get an idea of what, so I'm really more for the new members on the committee, and it's always a good reminder for the previous members, because we only do this once a year. So you get an idea of what the comments are like that the previous school committee.
They really liked you, I'd say.
Shocking, isn't it?
What did you say?
John heard me.
But as you get, it's just to give the new committee members a sense of the process, and also what we had Mr. Jakes do is Mr. Jakes, and we'll email this to you tomorrow. We're going to send you the school committee meeting link, so if you do want to watch it and really, again, get a sense of what it's like to go through this process for the first time, please watch the video. And the only thing I would just be mindful of, and I think Mrs. Fagan has done a nice job of, and Mr. DeMello in the past, is anything that you bring to the table in written form could be considered part of the written record. So just be mindful of any personal notes you might make. So if you were going to prepare a statement that you wanted to submit as your official record, that would be appropriate, and also if you have any notes on the side, that can be considered part of the written record as well. So just be mindful of that.
So you don't really have to, if you want to make notes and things like that, that's perfectly okay. Most of us just come in and we just go through the process, and you'll see what we do, what we were doing, and just everybody was giving input, not necessarily on every topic, but, you know, they, you just give your own, you know, evaluation on what, how you felt the superintendent did, and then we will, we will get together, Mr., Dr. DeMello and I will get together and just, and I know Wendy works on the sheet, because she takes notes too, and we put as many, we often have a lot of the same thought processes, so we just kind of put all those in, and then we, we develop an evaluation tool, what we thought, the results came out based on what you, what you put here. So it's a lengthy process, but be ready to do that for the 21st, so you can start looking over it. Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we should mention to the, the public and also the newer members that while we reduced the number of categories for evaluation, we didn't really reduce the evaluation, it was a matter of reorganizing how the, the criteria were stated. It's even more thorough than it was before, it's just organized differently.
Yeah, and I think the, the public should also be aware that this is a tool that comes from the state. So this is the same tool that all superintendents are measured by, not just, not just the superintendent in Totten.
Is it typical that the superintendent of any evaluates themselves, or is that just a Mr. Cabral thing?
No, part of the process is to provide, part of the process is to provide a reflection.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
He reflected in his evaluation.
Yeah, you reflected.
Mr. Pulowski?
I guess point of information or clarification, so on the instruction page, the key lists E as exceeds expectations, but then on the, you know, the, the actual evaluation, it lists E as exemplary.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Maybe, I guess technically it kind of means the same thing, but I don't know, probably our English teachers would demand that we be a bit more.
Well, we'll go, I'll, we'll check the DESI website and verify if it exceeds or exemplary.
Oh, yeah, we have exemplary, and, and.
We'll check the tool.
We'll make sure we have the right tool. Is that going to go on an email to Dr., Mr. Cabral?
We better very let the explanation.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, so that, have that ready for the, for the, we got a couple of weeks, so. Okay, anything else? Does anybody have any more questions? Well, you've had a full year, so that's, that's good. You're not doing any evaluations right away, so you should have some basis of things, and at least we're all back in school now, and that's a good thing, too. All right, all set with that, Mr. Cabral? Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think, and if anybody, the only thing I would add is if anybody has any specific questions or needs some, schedule some FaceTime, either in my office or office hours on Saturday, you know how to reach me, and I'll make myself accessible.
And the last thing we have on the agenda is the action, action item update.
I have no update at this time, and I have no, I have nothing to update.
Nothing to update the committee on at this time, other than on 12/21, you will receive a copy of the Guilfoyle contract, so that could, that'll be part of the actual packet on the 21st, and the only other question is if you notice or you feel that something is missing from the action item review list, please let myself or Wendy know, and we'll make sure it gets added, but we believe this is an accurate reflection of what remains open in the Totten Public Schools.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else they want to bring up in this unfinished business? Okay. Yes, we can entertain a motion to adjourn?
Press time first.
Press time? I'm sorry. I know this, well, there wasn't any press here, so I guess I moved too rapidly. There is no press here, there will be no press time, so now I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, everybody.